Clerk will offer the prayer and Alderman Clemens will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us up, God, with the Spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge.
Present.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cleese.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
And Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 15 members present.
Also, in attendance this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. I have a few items, and so I'll try to be brief with them. First, you may have noticed that on the annual Wallet Hub survey, the city was ranked as the 13th-best-run city in the United States. Now, this survey comes out every year, and one of their primary measures is what they call the effectiveness of local leadership, and they compare the op— they judge the operating efficiency of the city. They compare the cost per resident versus the quality of services. And on that score, the city did very well, and we got the 13th place out of 150 cities. So I think that is a credit to a lot of people who've worked on that, certainly the Board of Aldermen and many others who have worked to make sure that we deliver services as efficiently as we possibly can within the budget that we pass every year. So I was very happy to see that. You will see on the agenda that the jet—we are accepting money from the Jeff Moran Fund to put a shade canopy over the children's playground at Robey Park. This is something that Maryan— Alderwoman Mary Ann Malisee Golia and former Alderwoman Barbara Presley worked— have worked very hard on over the years. And I want to thank the Jeff Moran Fund for contributing the money, Alderwoman Malisee Golia for sort of spearheading this project, because in the end, we have a very nice playground already, but now we will have a shady playground where kids can play without getting sunstroke or that kind of thing in the hot days. So that will be installed later in the year, and will go up and down every summer and should be a big addition to Robey Park. Next, you see on the agenda some hydro transfers, transferring excess revenue into the hydro dam maintenance as well as the hydro reserve fund. There is considerable extra revenue in the hydro area this year, because the projected revenue was $1.2 million. And in fact, the final accounting is not yet in, because it's managed—the two dams are managed by Essex Power. But we expect that the excess revenue over the $1.2 million will be in the range of $550,000, maybe $600,000 as a result of heavy rain during part of the year. So that is good news, and there's certainly enough money to cover those two transfers. These are being recommended by the Budget Committee, and I hope the board will look favorably upon those. Another issue that I wanted to mention is that Paul Bergeron is on the agenda to be confirmed, to serve on the Board of Assessors. We all know Paul very well. He's been a longtime public servant, effective public servant as the city's city clerk for about 15-plus years. He wanted me to mention to you that another member of the Board of Assessors who's done a very good job is Dan Hansberry. Dan and Paul are actually first cousins, so—but they're both well-known in the community. They both can do a very good job on the Board of Assessors. We looked into the legal aspects of this, and the city nepotism policy does not apply for two reasons. First of all, they're not city employees. The policy does not apply to board members. Number two, even if they were employees—which of course, I'm saying they're not—are the—the only problem arises is if they supervise each other, which of course, serving as board members together doesn't involve any kind of supervisory relationship. Legal Department has issued a formal legal opinion on this, which I'm sure Attorney Bolton could discuss if you wanted to hear about that, but he and I really just want to make sure you are aware of that before he is confirmed. Finally, another issue on the agenda is the formation of the Animal Advisory Committee. This is something that Ms. Logue, who may be speaking during public comment, has worked very hard on. The idea here is to form a committee to advise the city about issues pertaining to animals, and primary among those would be the potential establishment of a downtown dog park to supplement the dog park we have down in the southwest, potentially on a different model, rather than a membership—a closed membership and a membership fee. This would be potentially run as a free dog park, open to anyone, with certainly rules that would be established by the Animal Dog Park Advisory Committee. And there's a parcel of land that is being—is a potential for this dog park, which is owned by the Milliard Association. The owners seem very favorably disposed—the owners, one of which is the city, seem very favorably disposed to the dog park on their otherwise unusable parcel. And so I wanted to thank Ms. Logue and everyone who has contributed to this idea, because it could be a big amenity for the city in general as well as downtown residents. So, Madam President, I think that's all that I have. The Fourth of July went great. Hopefully, as many people as possible saw the fireworks. I think people really enjoyed it, as always. The weather was fantastic, and so I think everybody had a good time, and the Parks Department did a wonderful job of making sure the Coleman Stadium was ready for the crowd, and everything was in good shape for everyone to enjoy the Independence Day. Thank you, Madam President.
Response to remarks of the mayor. I'll stand over on this side. Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings and public hearings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of June 24, 2019, and June 25, 2019, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
There are none.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Amber Logue? Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Amber Logue, 20 Lock Street. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Animal Advisory Committee that we just heard about from the mayor. So I wanted to focus more on the reason why it's important to establish the Animal Advisory Committee versus the exciting part of the discussion, which would be the downtown dog park. And the reason being is that I think that inevitably, sometime in the future, we would probably end up having some kind of a public dog park. But I do think that one of the reasons why it hasn't come up yet is who's going to government— govern it? Who's going to oversee it? Who's going to help advise in some of the different situations that could come up? So after speaking with the mayor about the idea of an Animal Advisory Committee that would not just see any dog parks or development or oversight, but also the relation of animal waste and how important it is for citizen education around proper animal waste disposal, removal, pickup, et cetera. There's a huge lack of education currently as to why it's important, how you properly dispose of it. So after speaking with Department of Environmental Services, as well as our engineers here for City Sewage, it is come to our attention more so that we can do a lot more, but who's going to do it? So the Animal Advisory Committee would help to put out that information. We don't have to come up with it. It already exists. There's a 58-page manual from DES that is a step-by-step instruction of how-to. And the work wouldn't all fall on the Animal Advisory Committee. The proper way to go about it is to get organized groups like Boys and Girls Club, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, PAL, of which would be happy to step up and help with some of those sewage markings to advise on that you can't dispose of animal waste. More so, recently, I was speaking with the Animal Control Officer in Hudson. As I'm sure many of you are aware, Hudson does have a free dog park. Hudson sees a lot of extracurricular activity from that. You stop to get gas, you stop to get a coffee. There's a lot of economic benefits that they are having from our residents that we could have as well. And one of her biggest—her biggest and only complaint was the fact that everything falls on her. She doesn't have somebody else to go to when there's a call that says, "Hey, I think that this dog should no longer be able to be in the park." She has to—all of that decision falls in wait—falls on her. She's a resident of Hudson, and, you know, it's public where her address is, and I don't think that that's fair. So it has never been more apparent to me than after that conversation with her of how important it is to have an Animal Advisory Committee, so that those options and those decisions do not solely rest on one person, especially whereas we have many more residents. I think that our Animal Control Officer would also appreciate a little bit of support in that fact. So I hope you'll consider the Animal Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval?
There are none.
Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Arnold Award of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Elizabeth Torino of 11 Berkeley Street, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants for a term to expire October 1, 2020. I have this day appointed William S. Parker, 1 Rockland Street, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2021. I have this day appointed Eric Drouet of 52 Main Street, Unit 206, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2020. I have this day appointed Nonya Egbono of the Caro Interfaith Council, P.O. Box 209, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire July 9, 2022. I have this day appointed Bernadette Melton Plant, 41 Parrish Hill Drive, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire April 30, 2022. I have this day appointed Dipa Magnolent of 18 Wild Rose Drive, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2022. I have this day appointed Brendan McMahon of 1 Massasoil Road, Nashua, to the Environment and Energy Committee as a student member for a term to expire July 9, 2020. I have this day appointed Colin McMahon of 1 Massasoil Road, Nashua, to the Environment and Energy Committee as a student member for a term to expire July 9, 2020. I have this day appointed Robert Borbich of 58 Manchester Street, Nashua, to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2020. I have this day appointed Christopher Barrett of 44 Abbott Street, Nashua, to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2021. I have this day appointed Pamela Anderson of 9 Plainfield Lane, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire March 1, 2022. I have this day appointed Sarah Caesar of 3 Pine Street, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire April 1, 2022. I have this day appointed Mark Thayer of 1 Clock Tower Place, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire April 1, 2022. I have this day appointed Robert E. Wollinger, 55 Decatur Drive, to the Nashua City Planning Board for a term to expire March 31, 2022. In respect of the request, these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 24, 2019 Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the July 2, 2019 Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the July 1, 2019 Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Board of assessors.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Paul R. Bergeron, 15 Stansted Place, Nashua, to the Board of Assessors for an indefinite term at the pleasure of the mayor. And Mr. Bergeron is not here this evening. He will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution 19-128, extending and enlarging the National—Nashua Rail Transit Committee.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our 19-128.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-142, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $6,200,000 for various improvements to the Jackson Mills and Mine Falls hydroelectric facilities.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our 19-142 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 ayes.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-144, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $60,000 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation into Parks and Recreation Grand Activity, Jeff Moran Fund, shade canopies at Robey Park.
Alderwoman Malisee Golia.
Yes. I would like to move for final passage of our 18-140—or 19, I'm sorry, 144, and if I may speak to it.
Certainly.
Thank you. First of all, as the mayor indicated, this first came to my attention, because someone contacted Alderman Presley about going there and the park being so hot. And we worked with DPW and Parks and Rec around the canopy, and after she left the board, DPW and Park and Rec and I continued to search for a way to fund this. And Capital Improvement Committee will be very happy to hear that this has been funded, because it has been a reoccurring item on their plate. So I hope they take notice, because they also ranked it very high, but we just didn't have the funds. And I would just say that after the formal announcement was made at Robey Park, DPW put up a laminated drawing of what it will look like, and I've received many favorable comments, so I know families who use the park are looking forward to the canopy being installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion before us is to recommend—is for final passage of our 19-144. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-149, changing the purpose of up to $235,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the Road and Traffic Improvements Project on Amber Street between Sharon Avenue and Diesel Road to pay costs for a paving, a portion of Pine Hill Road and various streets in the neighborhood if funds remain available.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of our 19-149 by roll call, and would like to speak to this, please.
Absolutely.
Pine Hill Road, when it was being investigated for the repaving that would be required, they did some drilling, some core drilling, to find out what they were facing underneath, like many of the streets in the city. And they found that there was everything under these streets, and so this extra money will help them deal with the issues they see. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion by Alderman Schmidt was for final passage of Resolution 19-149 by roll call. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 ayes.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-151, relative to the transfer of $72,870 from Department Number 128 Risk Management Account Number 89650, transferred to Property and Casualty Service Insurance Fund into various accounts in Department Number 106 Administrative Services.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to make a motion for final passage of our 19-151.
Motion is for final passage of our 19-151. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-152, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $110,000 of unanticipated revenue from Department Number 170 Hydroelectric Operations Account Number 44900, Hydroelectric Power Generation into Department Number 170 Hydroelectric Operations Account Number 54290, Dan Operating and Maintenance Services.
Alderman Tenza.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our 19-152 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of our 19-152. Further discussion on that motion? Roll call has been requested. Would the clerk—clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 ayes.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-153, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $200,000 of unanticipated revenue from Department Number 170 Hydroelectric Operations Account Number 44900, Hydroelectric Power Generation into Fund Number 7064, Hydropower Reserve Fund.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of our 19-153 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-153 by roll call. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 ayes.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-156, relative to authorizing the transfer of up to $140,925 for Fund Number 7073, School Capital Reserve Fund into School Grant Activity, School Infrastructure Grant Funds.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our 19-156, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, and this is a grant from the state of which they fund 80% of the project, and the city has to do 20%. This is for security issues relative to the safety of our schools here in Nashua. Extremely important, and I hope that everyone will support it.
Motion is for final passage of our 19-156. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance 19-047, establishing an animal and dog park advisory committee.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our 19-047.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 19-047. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution 19-157, changing the agent to expend on certain expendable trust funds administered by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman—Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathwright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Malisee Golia. Given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of res—
I'm sorry, in the Board of Public Works. Sorry.
First reading of Resolution 19-158, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Association of School Administrators and Supervisors, American Federation of School Administrators, AFL-CIO, from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, and related transfers.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathwright, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisee Golia, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemens, and myself. Given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-159, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,300,000 for property reevaluation services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathwright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Malisee Golia, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading of our 19-159 by roll call. Refer to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, July 22, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldomatic Chamber.
Would the—okay, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 ayes.
That motion carries. New business ordinances.
There are none.
Period for general public comment. We have two speakers that have signed up. Chris Griffin. Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Griffin, 56 Tyler Street, apartment 202, Nashua. I've spoken in front of you a couple of times before, and I'm getting tired of this.
Chris Griffin, 56 Tyler Street, Apartment 202, Nashville. I've spoken in front of you a couple of times before, and I'm getting tired of this. For some reason, the city of Nashville doesn't understand what the Americans Disability Act is, and what your responsibilities are thereof. I went to the mayor's office on June 4th and told him of two problem areas that need to be taken care of for the safety of people walking around. Unfortunately, only 90% of one of those was taken care of, and the other one's been ignored. Last year, I talked to you guys before I filed the complaint on the bridge. Nothing was done. I had to file a complaint. I was also talking to your risk manager last year about the problems with having snow cleared on certain sidewalks and crosswalks. Instead, she accused me of falsifying my disabilities. So I filed a complaint this winter, submitted 78 pictures for the Department of Justice to look at on sidewalks that hadn't been cleared properly after 72 hours, which is the required time for them to be done, and crosswalks, which also had not been maintained at all. The street in question hadn't been done at all this winter, not at all. What is the problem? Does the city not understand what the Americans Disability Act is a law? It's not just a thought, something you think about. I mean, I go down the streets, and there's bushes crawling into the sidewalks, and then when people put their trash cans there, I have nowhere to walk but out in the street again. I'm tired of it. I'm sick and tired of it. I will be probably filing a third complaint unless somebody wants to call me and discuss these problems. And when I file that third complaint, I'll also ask them to look into whether or not there is actually a, what is the phrase, a culture of discrimination in the city of Nashua. Because I've experienced so many other problems through a number of your departments. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. He's got my name, my phone number. You've got my address. If somebody wants to talk to me here before I file next week, please get in touch with me, because I'd love to work this out with the city instead of you having to get in fines again. But if nobody wants to talk to me, I have to assume you all just don't care. Okay? I know a number of you are coming up for election. Is this really what you want the public to know? That you don't care about your elderly and disabled being able to get around the city safely on the sidewalks? That's enough. Have a great night, everybody.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about the right-to-know reports that I've been requesting. It's apparent that some of you in the alderman level are pretty upset that I've made the requests that I've made to the administration based on emails or text messages. And these reports really serve a purpose. I have gleaned some pretty amazing stuff from the reports that I've been able to get from the administration. And they were fairly extensive. I asked for an audit log, which I know the director didn't really know they could even run it, but they did, and that was enormously helpful. It's a accounting measure to, an audit measure, to look at how each individual is changing property valuations or working or going into the calculated data to make property valuation changes. Very interesting piece of information. I've requested the permit reports, and the permit reports were a big disappointment. And you know, back from September, I was all about permits not being captured and being concerned that we weren't getting permits captured and valuing them appropriately. Well, the permit report really shows me that that problem is still going on and is a problem. The report was wholly disappointing because we got, I received 22 pages of six-point print in a PDF file of every permit pulled that had to do with non-value items, including non-value items like mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, which don't count in the assessments. It was a totally useless report for me, and I was frustrated by that. But then it made me realize the director must have sent me the data the way she gets it. And if the data is in this form to her, it's as useless to her as it is to me. And it would be very difficult to account for how your permits are being captured. Now, subsequent to getting this report, another lady in the neighborhood who's been active in this went to building permit area, building department, and asked the gentleman there if they could create a permit report that would be more useful. He was super helpful, went to IT, knew exactly what we were looking for, and is trying now to help us get a report that we can actually work with and get in a readable form. So, just so we can understand what's happening with permits. But I also went down and spoke to a staff person in assessing, and I learned that, I asked, "What do you run for permits reports?" And they said, "Monthly, we run a report that's given to the assessors each month. And yearly, we run a single report." And one of them, I can't remember which one, is Excel format. So then I scratched my head learning that last week and say, "Why don't I get an Excel-formatted report?" I've sort of complained to you guys that these PDF files are brutal to work with, and you can't do anything with the data. So if the administration has data in Excel form, send it to us that way. Don't lock us down with data that's useless. I received an assess proactivity report that was able to show me what was happening with visits to properties, permits, abatements, all that kind of stuff. Super helpful. I was able to get work logs and mileage reimbursement reports. And last week, I had been trying to figure out what happened when KRT had the meeting, and all these people came out in their wards to say, "We want you to come see our house again." So we all got our letters the end of August with the initial reevaluation data. And then KRT set up these little meetings to allow people to come up to express concerns. And you could ask for them to send somebody else out. And I wanted to know how values were changed the second time around. But with our contract with KRT, we never asked for that data, and we never captured what happened the second time around. I was interested in that. And I was led to believe that there were really not many changes, that there were, you know, 300 people who came to those meetings in total. There weren't that many changes left. So I wrote a right-to-know to ask, what I figured is they must have sent a second letter out after the first letter when they did a final change, because I got one. I was one of those people who went and said, "Look at my house again." And in October, I got a letter. So I said, "Oh, anyone who went out got a new letter in October." Well, sure enough, they did. So I did a right-to-know request, and I said, "Send me all the letters you sent out in October for the second look." It was 1,252. That's a lot. That was a lot more than I thought. That's a lot of data in the second review. Now granted, for all the parcels of property we have, maybe that's only about 5%, but it was a lot of data. I will tell you what concerns me about this data, having gone through it, is KRT used 2017 values that must have been given to them by the city. And when I take these 1,252 letters and put them into a spreadsheet that's workable, and I combined it with the data disc data, spreadsheet data in City Hall, the 2017 values that we have on our records do not match the data that we gave KRT. And it really concerns me. Something went awry for some of these properties, and I don't know why. And out of the 1,252, 12% of the data was not correct. That's a lot. So now I'm sitting here looking at data where the baseline given to KRT does not match our records. And what I did observe for sure was that properties that were MLS corrected, let's say a property sold in 2017, and it was corrected by MLS data for the December tax bill of 2017, that was never put into the KRT assessment, reevaluation. It didn't get in there. So properties that may have had, some of them had EYB changes. They had sold, they had been valued at 150, and they sold for 275. So when the assessor corrected it, they made a more aggressive correction because the property had had a lot of upgrades. That's great. But that never got put into the KRT data. And to me, that's a significant issue. And I have typed a question into assessing, the general helpline, to ask, you know, "How did this happen? And why is this so confusing? Where's the mix-up?" But to me, there's a question there. And, yeah, that's pretty important. So the reports have all served a purpose. And they served a purpose because some of you here really felt that this whole issue with a certain assessor was my responsibility to find the data, to establish proof, to look at work performance, and to grab it all. I don't feel that was ever correct. I feel the city had a responsibility, and I don't think the city followed its responsibility the way it should have. I think the investigation going on right now is far too narrow. But the, well, what do I want to say? So these requests gleaned a lot. And I came to you a few meetings ago, and I spoke pretty directly about abatements not getting done, certain people not carrying their load. I could tell you, after that meeting, that individual did 20 abatements in a month. Imagine if they had done that for the five other months, what we would have had. Hey, that's impressive. Light a fire, get a response. Shouldn't have to light a fire, but it got a response. The work logs, the reason I pulled work logs, and I pulled the emails of this assessor, because the work logs, which were not well-documented relative to other assessors, the work logs were really incomplete. But the one thing noted in the work logs repeatedly was that they respond to taxpayer emails, often. I thought, "How many taxpayer emails come in?" I checked with the assess help email, and I was told hardly any. But then each assessor has their own personal business email address that they can give out, so they could have their own business emails. So what did I do? I did a right-to-know for the emails. And do you know what I found in three months? That assessor had to respond to 13 emails in 90 days. That's not that many. When I see it on a work log over and over again for half a day's work, that's not that many. I chuckled, I have to tell you, when I saw those emails. One of the emails was sent by our former chief, and the question and the topic was Ordolano. And the question was, "Does anyone know what she really wants? Can anyone figure out what's going on?" This was the beginning of November. You know, this has gone on way too long. Can anyone figure out? And one of our assessors, the one I was looking at, these emails responded, "I think she's got an axe to grind, and I can tell you, even if she wins her abatement, she's not going away." I have to chuckle at that. No, what makes me chuckle at that is that here's our chief sending an email to his four assessors to say, "Does anyone know what this lady wants? She's been down here for two months." But he never invited me into his office to speak to me, nor would he even come out of his office to speak to me when I had a question. Very hard to get him. Imagine how different this might have been had he tried to figure out himself, "What does this lady want? What's the problem here? What is she looking at?" Things might have been quite a lot different. So I asked for this data, and I look at these reports very carefully, and I do a lot with it, and I work very hard with it because it tells a story. And I'm learning a lot about our permits. I'm learning a lot about missed data. You know, I'm learning a lot about these values that we gave KRT that are not correct. Something's wrong in our data capture, and that's happening through our IT department. Those are big flags to me. I'm concerned. I'm really concerned that there's an overreach going on in the Board of Assessors that through the city, through our city government and our leadership, that does not allow our board to operate independently. And there are two things that bother me. Back two or three months ago, the mayor had announced at this meeting that all Board of Assessor meetings would be verbatim minutes and televised. The Board of Assessors had no idea that was happening. They did not want verbatim minutes. And when I looked at the charter, and I called a few other city officials, former people, I said, "Can the mayor just vote and tell, you know, make a mandate that the minutes have to be changed or done a certain way?" And the answer was no. They said, "Look in the charter." I did look in the charter, and from my understanding, it's up to each board to determine how they're going to keep their public record. They have to keep a public record per the RSA, no question. But it doesn't have to be verbatim. And the reason they didn't want it verbatim is they don't have the staff. They've got four clerical people, one who's a supervisor, who are, you know, everyone has said they're up to their eyeballs in work, and now you put verbatim minutes on top of them. So when the order was given, the, at that point in the meeting on a Tuesday night, the clerical person had already done the minutes, not verbatim. Had to go back and do them verbatim. They were 47 pages long, and they're not used to doing that. And I couldn't understand when it was voted here why we weren't using another resource to outsource them or have somebody else do them not within the office like we do with other city minutes. Why were we pushing this in on the staff? We pay 800 to 1,000 bucks to have those minutes typed up verbatim down there. It's really not a good use of money or resources. I just came out of a meeting last Tuesday. It's 107 pages of minutes because it was the final go on the abatements. It was a three-hour meeting, three, over three hours. That's ridiculous. And when I went after the first meeting, after it got voted here, or after the mayor said, "This is going to happen," and I went to the Board of Assessors meeting, and I talked to one of them before the meeting began, "We don't want this." And another clerical staff said, "The board members don't want this. They don't want these verbatim minutes." It's an awful lot of work for them to have to read and make certain 100 pages are correct as well. But that got forced into there without any vote of the board. Recently, in the last maybe, I don't know, two or three weeks, we set up an email address for our Board of Assessors. So we now have a way for the public to reach the board. That's never happened before. And it was something I complained about because other cities like Keene, Manchester, the Board of Assessors has websites and, or has addresses that you can email them directly. We don't have, bless you. We don't have phone numbers, and we don't have addresses for ours. So all of a sudden, on the website, an address appears, bosses@nashawnh.gov. They got a website. That's great. I send an email in to address an issue and address a concern I have with what's going on in management in there. And within three minutes, I get an email fired back at me, very angry, from the director. She's bull at my email. I wrote back, "Well, hello. I didn't know you were on this address." The address is actually screened by the director. The Board of Assessors is her boss. So then I called all the other cities and towns that have these addresses, and I said, "Is your chief or your manager on those addresses? Or is it solely your Board of Assessors? Every one of them. It's solely their board, not Nashua." And it was inappropriate. It's inappropriate for me to have to take a blasting email from somebody that I didn't even know was on the email chain that was blindly copied or hidden, and the public doesn't know they're sending it to this individual.
Ms. Ordolano, our time is running.
Okay.
Running out.
Okay, I'll just end it with this. It came to my attention just yesterday that there was a Facebook post put up by our new director that absolutely flabbergasted me on Facebook. And it said, by Kim Smith-Kleiner, "It is not my normal process to respond to Facebook posts, but I feel residents have the right to hear both sides, and that I respect the conclusions they come to. The assessing department has received multiple detailed requests, and I am being continually insulted for not responding to two residents' numerous questions. When we did investigate and I respond, I'm attacked that they were blindsided. Here's the truth. We had 90 remaining abatements to respond to. Residents who deserve to have their abatements heard from the deadline of July 1st, I asked our assessors to work as hard as possible to process all these abatements. Everything else was secondary priority. If a resident feels my decision was wrong, I am happy to sit down and discuss it with you. My priority has always been to serve the people of the city, always." This was a reply to an April 27 post that popped up over the weekend from three months ago. I'm just flabbergasted. We don't have a policy in here whereby our directors or top management don't respond on Facebook. You know, if you folks all sit here and think it's a one-way street, that I'm the problem and you are all the right people.
Ms. Ordolano.
It's more than that. So I would ask you to consider a policy to stop this. And there was one alderman who gave a thumbs up to this. I didn't respond because I think it's inappropriate to use Facebook to air the dirty laundry like this.
Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen. I'll start on this side. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I just want to welcome Alderman Gidge back. It's my first meeting with him here, so hello, my friend. I'm glad to see you're in good health and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Ken.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Malize Goya.
Yes, I too would just like to welcome Alderman Gidge back. It's good to have you back in the chamber. Good to see you.
Anyone else? Alderman Karen.
Welcome back, Alderman Gidge, and I love your scooter.
Alderman Lopez.
So first, I just want to make a public disclosure. I have accepted a position in Greater National Mental Health. In the past, I worked at Harbor Homes. I abstained from any votes that would represent anything like a conflict of interest, so I just figured I would announce that. Pretty happy with my new position, though, so that's awesome. In addition to that, I'd like to thank the board for supporting the Animal Advisory Board. I think it's a great example of a public and private partnership. When people in Nashua step forward to volunteer and they want to help address situations in our community to make them better, I think it's something we need to support. I know in Ward 4 in the more urban areas, we've had an ongoing issue with exactly what the role is of animals downtown, whether they're eating in restaurants, whether they're doing their business on sidewalks, whatever they're doing. So I appreciate having a venue for public input to that effect. I want to thank everybody who helped out with the Fourth of July event at Riverside Barbecue. I want to wish Dave, the owner, a happy birthday as well. And then I just wanted to remind the public who might be watching that Dancing in the Streets is coming up. Alderman Laws is going to lead the breakdancing, so I invite everybody here. Thank you.
Alderman Laws.
Well, I too would like to welcome back Alderman Gidge. It's good to see you. And I'd like to personally thank Amber and Cole for helping to make this dog advisory board thing a reality.
Animal advisory.
Animal, sorry, Tom. Alderman Lopez. And that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
I'd like to also welcome Alderman Gidge back. And then I have a couple of other items. First is, I'd like to thank Amber and Cole, and especially Amber, for all of the work that she's done. I know you've done a lot of work with DES and CDC, et cetera. I do think that this advisory board is going to be very good. And I'd like to thank- And I'd like to thank Alderman Lopez for all his work with the Riverside Bar, and Riverside Barbecue for the veterans event that you did on 4th of July. Thank you so much for all of that. And then I'd like to address something that, and I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the gentleman's name that was here from Tyler Street and who spoke about the ADA issues and so on. What I'd like to talk about is the bushes and the sidewalks. I've called DPW and Code Enforcement and so on, and especially Code Enforcement. They do go in. Many of these bushes that are hanging over onto the sidewalks that are blocking our children's way, people with disabilities and so on, are from private owners. And the city can only do so much. If it's city property, we should be right on it and taking care of it, and I agree with that. It's the private property owners that are letting the shrubs and so on go over. And I've called a number of times. I just recently called on Hills Ferry because their, the children trying to walk to school had to go out into the streets and so on, and they got into it. I'm sorry, Ferry Road, not Hills Ferry. And Code Enforcement got right on it, talked to the owners of the home. And if they don't do it, I believe that the city does take care of things like that. So I think in that respect, I do think that we do take care of it when it's, when it is brought up. And, but it is the private ownership's responsibility to also keep your bushes trimmed for sidewalks and so on. And we need to think about our neighbors. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to welcome my friend and fellow classmate back, Alderman Gidge. Got to keep the fireworks going here. The other thing I'd like to congratulate Nick Cagiano and his staff for the 4th of July fireworks and the entire day. As Alderman Karen well knows, they go and start early, early, early in the morning, and then there's sometimes till midnight. That's a long day. And I heard numerous people telling me just how great they thought the fireworks were this year, and everything seemed to run very smoothly. So a shout out to Nick and his staff. And also the Spartans, who also put on a fantastic show and are going to be performing in a competition in Manchester later in the month. So, thank you.
Alderman Gathwright.
I too welcome my fellow colleague back.